This is the opening of the public hearing.
Hey, they approved it.
Do you want me to bang your devil's?
I did. Item number nine, 500 Lake Avenue, final re-subdivision. Start with the final.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. For the record, Tom Hegney, on behalf of the applicant. This is a re-subdivision of two lots on a 1973 subdivision map, which set aside 5.4 acres as open space along Round Hill Road. Lot four, which is 7.8 acres on this subdivision, fronts both on Lake Avenue and Round Hill. And lot three, which is 2.4 acres, fronts just on Lake Avenue. What we're proposing to do because of the wetland impacts, particularly on lot three, is to add 1.1 acres to lot three so that it becomes 3.5, and to create two lots of just over three acres each for the rest of lot four, so that we are from two lots to three, all lots being over three acres in the two-acre zone. We have reviewed the plan with the Wetland Agency, and they have given us approval for three dwellings and a new driveway from Round Hill Road to the houses that are proposed on lots two and three. The sightlines for the driveway proposed on Round Hill Road are 400 feet and meet the town's highway requirements. In addition, the grade for that driveway does not exceed 10% and meets the grade at Round Hill Road, which is required, again, under the town highway manual. The drainage plan, which has been developed, reduces peak flows off-site, and the driveway is more than 100 feet from the off-site wetland. And the development on this site is, except for some patio space around the pools on lots two and three, is in excess of 100 feet from the wetland areas on-site. We have revised the record sheet to reflect the notes that were requested by the engineering department as part of their February 24 memo. And we have also reviewed the additional comments that the town engineer has made. And to that end, I would like to ask Mr. Frangione, our civil engineer, to review those comments in relation to what he has found on-site, because I think it's important for you to hear what actually is there in terms of groundwater and modeling in relation to what Mr. Marucci has suggested is something that, to quote him, "may be possible" in terms of an alternate location for the driveway. Rob?
For the record, Rob Frangione, Frangione Engineering, licensed professional engineer in Connecticut. Just to briefly go over and summarize the drainage for the subdivision, essentially, lot one is going to have its treatment through pervious pavement courtyards here. Lot two will have the house and driveway-treated pervious pavement courtyards in the front, behind the garage, which then, these don't overflow until the 25-year storm, go to a landing. Same thing with lot three. All the runoff is treated through the pervious asphalt parking courts and in the front there. And then, should that overflow, it then comes to a pervious pavement landing. And then, the final line is the rain garden, which does not discharge until at least the 10-year storm. So, all of the--
This applicant, this application was before us several weeks ago.
Yes.
Can you tell me if it made any changes?
There is no change to the site plan. I just wanted to kind of, for the record, to make it complete, just give you a quick overview as to, Mr. Marucci then said in his February comments that the drainage report is acceptable with certain requested revisions. That was in February. In March, we resubmitted the site plan with the requested changes and a cover letter to Wetlands, because that permit was actually still, was granted. And so, to fulfill the permit requirements of Wetlands, we addressed the comments that Mr. Marucci had, and we resubmitted them. While we were going through the zoning process, we resubmitted this. Now, he's come up with his comments to talk about the alternative driveway. This alternative was requested as part of the wetland process and during the original subdivision application that we had done for here. And what Scott was saying was, in his comments, that he thinks it may be possible based on some test holes that were elsewhere on the site. Well, today, I went out and we did some more test holes. And what we found verified what I thought, which is that the soil's terrible down where this alternative driveway would go. This test hole here, indicated as FE5, had groundwater at 14 inches. Here's a picture of the test hole with the groundwater in the test hole. This test hole over here, FE6, had nine inches of topsoil, and then it went right to gray modeled hardpan. And groundwater was coming in where the topsoil met the hardpan. And here's a picture of that hole as well. Elsewhere on the site, this FE3, we hit ledge at 34 inches. And in order to make this alternative plan work, we would have to cut the grade down at least three feet, which means the driveway would be sitting right on ledge. If we were to try to use the same pervious asphalt treatment, we'd have to blast down two feet of ledge, bring in gravel, and under-drain the whole thing. Same thing that we would have to do with this courtyard here and this courtyard here because of the groundwater issue. We don't have the depth above groundwater to effectively treat the runoff and get the runoff reduction volume. We'd have to under-drain all of this, which means there would be an increase in runoff volume leaving the site. To this point, we would not meet the drainage manual. The drainage proposal that we have with the driveway coming off of Round Hill meets the drainage manual.
Well, he is, obviously has given us a memo, as you know, which says, "Resubmit prior to subdivision approval." Therefore, these comments that you're making, you're going to have to, we're going to rely upon him. He seems to have come to a different conclusion. Now, you have some new facts you want to present.
It's the new data, yes.
What I would like to also do, since, when you look at this site plan that you prepared for Wetlands, those buildings that you're showing on lots three and two are considerably larger and have, since you did this, those have all been reduced in size, because the new drawings that you're proposing for the two and three are much smaller. The footprint is much smaller. You can just--
Well, they're different scale drawings, unfortunately.
They're different scale drawings, but just to let you know, on lot number three, the north-south dimension of the Lake Street, these are just rough dimensions, is 135 feet by east-west 115. Showing the Round Hill access, that 135 reduces to 100, and the east-west reduces to 80. A considerable reduction in the footprint. I believe that was part of your testimony when you were here earlier, that you were going to make those houses smaller because you, for whatever reasons--
Yes, it's--
Let me finish.
Okay.
Lot number two has a similar profile, that coming off of Lake Street, it's 125 by 115 in the north-southeast-west, and coming off of Round Hill, it's 115 by 80. Again, a considerable reduction, which would potentially, using the house now that you've proposed for the Round Hill Drive, if that were superimposed on this drawing, would allow that roadway to be shifted considerably to the west.
Again, what it comes down to is, when this plan was prepared--
But he seems to think even where it is, unless your new information is going to change his mind, that a roadway could be constructed there that does in fact meet the design manual.
In my professional opinion, this roadway here cannot meet the runoff reduction volume because of the underdrainage, because of the soils. Even if we have the reduced houses--
Yep.
Okay, see, you're correct, but these were the houses that were--
Right.
--under the prior application before we reduced them. They shrink, but they don't shrink to nothing. We still have these courtyards here, and here, and here, that are in areas where the soils are poor, terrible even. And so, we would still have to do the underdrains. The whole point-- The whole point of this revision, or this alternative, was to try and keep things away from this hillside that everybody's so concerned about. We have to keep the houses here and here, and the septic systems here and here, which then means the driveways have to be in this area. So, if we're going to try, if the goal of this alternative was to show how we could protect this hillside, that means we have to treat the stormwater here. And I'm telling you, the soils are terrible to do that. That's why having the driveway come off of Round Hill Road is the feasible alternative and prudent.
You have to work this out with Mr. Marucci. I mean, we left it where we left it. It's unclear in his comments. He says it may be feasible, and you've got to work with Mr. Marucci. There's no point other--
I understand, yeah.
--in making representations to us on this.
Actually, the language from his report is, "The concept may be possible."
I got "feasible" is the word he uses, I think, but--
I didn't see the word "feasible" in his report in his final conclusion.
In any event, he has to work with Mr. Marucci--
It's just possible.
Whatever, he has to work with Mr. Marucci.
The other thing that I found concerning is, we had amended our plans to address his February, Mr. Marucci's February 24 comments, and submitted them on March 27, and again, with this application. And the only comments we get from engineering are on the alternative plan and not the plan that we actually have in front of you. And I don't know how that happens when it's been in a month and we've--
Because we asked you for this plan during the earlier hearing, and you refused to give it to us.
No, we actually had given it to, Mr. Marucci had gotten it as part of the wetland application back in February, and we had also submitted it to your staff.
Mr. Marucci did not get the plan, the alternative driveway plan.
No, he did not.
He had not seen it. I had spoken to him. It was never passed on beyond the Wetlands Agency. So, I just want to clear the air there that is not, that's not factual. So, the first time Mr. Marucci laid eyes on any data related to this plan was when we forwarded it to him with your submission of this application.
And at the same time, we forwarded the revisions that he had requested, including the re-subdivision map notes, in very detailed fashion so that he could go through and see that his prior comments were addressed as well. The other thing that I think is important to recognize is, as we went through the wetland process, the Wetland Agency is looking at what's best for the environment as well. And for us to go back to them now and say, "We have a plan that has a driveway more than 100 feet from any Wetlands, and our development provides a great deal of buffer area to the Wetlands on-site, which are significant Wetlands. And now, we want to run a driveway near them that is going to be poorly drained." I don't know how they follow their guidelines and requirements and approve something like that, when we have a plan currently, which would be the reasonable prudent alternative to anything else on-site, which stays more than 100 feet away from the Wetlands. Matt Pop, who spent 15, 16 years on the Wetland Agency, is our landscape architect. There were a couple of things that came up as part of the prior hearing. One was that the plantings along the Round Hill Road driveway, as proposed, were too small and too formal. And so, I want Matt to go through with you what those modifications are on the landscape plan that you have as part of this submission. And also, it's not a win-win here, because by locating the drive someplace else, there are other trees that come down, and I want Matt to go over those trees that would be impacted on-site by moving the driveway to another location. And lastly, I'm going to ask him to do his review of the analysis he conducted for Wetlands on the comparability of the two Wetlands off-site and the one on-site. Matt?
Matthew Pop, landscape architect, professional wetland scientist from Environmental Land Solutions. I was on the Wetland Agency hearing in town for 16 years. I've worked with Pat Sesto. Actually, I've known her for 27 years, 28 years or so. We used to work together, and when she was in Wilton, I think it was 17 years, we submitted numerous applications before her, so we know the wetland director very well. Just from the, near the end of the, just to go over the site plan, Lake Avenue is down on the bottom, Round Hill Road is on the top. The blue line right here is the inland Wetlands. Near the end of the public hearing, the last planning and zoning, we made some modifications to the proposed plantings in this area. And the changes that were made were that we increased the sizes of six of the trees to five to six-inch calibers. We added two additional shade trees. We added five more evergreen trees and five more additional understory trees. And the format was changed from kind of a formal setting to an informal setting. So, in that Round Hill Road hillside area, we're proposing about 100 trees in total. Also, we're proposing, down in the wetland area here, there's a lot of lawn area, that is, within the wetland, and we're proposing to restore that to a wet meadow. And that totals an acre in size. Like I said at the last meeting, or maybe at the wetland meeting, now I don't recall anywhere in Greenwich where an applicant restored an acre of wetlands on a project. So, here's the wetland corridor. That would be greatly enhanced by this project. I do have some photos that I'm just going to review with you. The first two are the hillside right through here. The first photo is this point right here, number one, taken up the slope, and the second one's about halfway going up the slope. On that hillside, there's about 25 to 30 tall, thin, white pines. They're susceptible to wind throw. I think they break over easily. On the first photo, right near the center, we have one sugar maple. There's actually maybe one other, smaller sugar maple. That's one of the native trees in the site. There's a down ash through here. Also, on that hillside, there's two, three small hickories and a few ash trees. All of the photos, I mean, all of the evergreen, all of the trees that you see here that are leafed out, this photo was taken on May 10, are Norway maples. There's approximately 100 Norway maples on that hillside. Norway maples are non-native, and they're invasive. Also, on that hillside is Atlantis and a devil's walking stick. Those aren't as common as the Norway maples. If you go to the second photo, all those trees that are leafed out, those are all Norway maples. You could also see two stumps of white pines that have snapped, that have remained there. And those are mainly right in this area here. Eventually, over time, you know, I would think that the white pines would fall over or snap, and the Norway maples, being somewhat aggressive, would take over that hillside totally. And they're already starting to do that. There was some comments at the, at the last public hearing about visual aesthetics of this hillside here. You know, when I drive by, I just see, you know, to me, it's not really that, it is aesthetically pleasing, but it's not any more aesthetically pleasing than any other hillside. There's utility lines through here, right along the roadside. And again, there is some down wood. The most visually pleasing area is off of Lake Avenue, the views into the wet meadow area, and then the trees surrounding this meadow. The trees surrounding that meadow are very specimen. They're, it's a park-like quality. They're wide branching to that. So, again, I think the main views, the site views, are off of Lake Avenue. This is, right here, is the alternative driveway showing, the alternative plan right here. And then, the circled areas in red are the trees that are, would have to be removed by that driveway. And I just had the smaller version here. So, I just took the driveway off of here and added on to the landscape plan. And on this roadway here, there are two significant white oak, swamp white oaks. That's on photo number three. That's in this vicinity here. That would be removed. Those trees, oak trees, are very high quality for wildlife, the oak trees. There's 11 or so, 12, white pines that are maybe 24 to 42-inch diameter or breast height. There's two hemlocks, you know, 20 to 30-inch diameter or breast height. There's a beech right in the middle here, that's about 30 inches D V H. There's one red maple, 36 D V H. One Norway spruce, 36 D V H. And two flowering dogwoods. So, there's a number of trees, you know, maybe 20 to 25 in here, that would have to be removed. The last photo shows the white pines, you know, in this vicinity here, near the center. This way, looking to the north, to the right, and those white pines are right there. The driveway basically comes right through where that dogwood is flowering. This driveway here, you know, it may get approved by the town engineer. If it did, it'd be my opinion that it wouldn't get approved by the Wetland Agency. I know Pat Sesto has been pushing, like, engineers to understand that you just can't comply with the drainage manual and get a wetland permit. There are other issues that come into play, wildlife habitat or wildlife impacts. This driveway right here, next to the wetland, is fairly close. It's like 20 feet or so, right where it comes off, would be a retaining wall. And there's about a 400 and maybe 400, 450-foot distance from here to here, that's within 50 feet of the wetland. And I don't see how that gets approved when you have an alternative that's prudent and feasible, but not impact to the Wetlands. At the wetland meeting, there was also asked to have a comparison between the on-site meadow, wet meadow here, with the Allen Preserve, which is up here, their meadow, wet meadow. And this blue line right here is kind of the start of the wet meadow. And that's about 90 feet from here to the property line, from the wetland to the property line. And it's about another 10 or 15 feet to the rain garden. Just in general, the main difference is, our meadow here has ponding water. And when you have ponding water, there's a lot more wildlife associated with that. You know, when I went out to the site on, you know, May 10, just on, doing a quick walkthrough, you know, by our meadow, there was robin, catbird, house wren, warbler vario, yellow warbler, black and white warbler, common yellow-throated, morning dove, chipping sparrow, song sparrow, cowbirds, Baltimore oriole, scarlet tanager, this whitetail dare and chipmunk. You know, and the land trust meadow, there were some wildlife, but it was mainly the common species, such as titmouse and robins. But it was fairly quiet down there. You know, all the activity is around this ponding area. This ponding area also provides sediment trapping. It's a function of a wetland that traps sediment from stormwater runoff. And that sediment trapping also provides more cleansing of stormwater runoff.
Mr. Pop, if I could just take you back for a minute. On February 15, Mr. Frangione wrote Bob Clausy, in response to Director Sesto's request for additional information on this application. And in it, he was asked to provide definitive information to substantiate the position that the driveway off of Lake Avenue would not be capable of meeting the requirements of the town's drainage manual. So, in fact, it would seem, on my reading of this, that Wetlands was interested in that, and that your client, your team, made the argument that it would not meet drainage requirements, the drainage manual requirements. Now, you're saying that we need to educate DPW that what meets the drainage manual may not meet Wetlands. Now, it seems, DPW has said to return, Director Sesto had asked this question. As I read this documentation, I feel like people who had asked about the Lake Avenue access were not necessarily getting all the information, didn't have an opportunity to review it. As I go through this, I honestly feel like that's where you all need to be. And I feel like, right now, I'm hearing something very similar to an application that was denied a couple of weeks ago without addressing the concerns that were raised by this commission. So, there's, on several areas, and maybe I should be addressing this to Mr. Hegney and not to you, but the issue isn't whether or not Wetlands understands DPW, but has everybody had a chance to review all the information and decide? Has Wetlands looked at the alternative and really reviewed it for working? Has DPW had the full opportunity? Once that has happened, and you've revised everything to what works and they agree with, then you come here. I feel like we're, you know, what was it Yogi Berra said about that? Here we go all over again?
Deja vu.
It's deja vu all over again.
I disagree. I mean, they have a wetlands permit.
Right.
They have a wetlands permit.
Right, but we denied the application that that was based on.
And it's not our responsibility to go back and review Wetlands' logic. They have a permit.
No, we're agreeing with Wetlands. Wetlands asked for something--
They have a wetlands permit--
Yes, but we--
--after that letter.
But we denied that application then. So, now, this is a de novo application that doesn't sound very new. They're back with the same thing we denied, essentially.
There was a significant issue that we had, that we could not address before the time ran out on the last application, and that was the approval of the septic systems for each of the lots by the health department.
But that's not why we denied it.
The decision letter just says, "I didn't get four votes, so it was denied."
Right, but you heard the discussion that we had, and we did not, that was not a concern that was, I mean, that may have been one of the concerns that was strongly voiced. I can go back and look at my notes. Certainly, we don't go forward, but without--
Correct.
But we voiced several other concerns at the time. And the application that was denied is basically back before us. And so, Director Sesto had actually asked for an alternative plan.
But they have a wetlands permit.
Actually, one of the--
I get that.
One of the plans they asked for was to have all three houses be serviced by the driveway on Round Hill Road so that they could eliminate--
I asked the same question.
--the driveway on Lake Avenue.
I asked the same question at the last meeting.
And because of the grades between lots--
That was the answer.
--two and one, we could not establish the driveway pitch that's required under the highway manual to be able to get that driveway from Round Hill Road up to the house on lot one.
Yes, I asked the same question at the last meeting, and I recall the answer.
And the other thing is, we also came back with a much more robust planting plan around the existing driveway so that invasive species were removed and a natural habitat was, is proposed to be created around that driveway.
It seems that, excuse me, the only real significant difference between the one that wasn't carried and this one is, to me, a comment that came from engineering-- and this one is, to me, a comment that came from engineering that an alternate driveway may be possible. I think digging down and kind of getting this down to the crux of it, the first place to start is have Mr. Frangione take the information he has, the soil testing he did, the test pits that he dug, and have that discussion with Mr. Marucci. That's the first step. Because if you're talking about the design of a driveway and drainage that can't happen because of significant issues or something, which have been discovered in the field since the last time, I think that kind of resolves that issue of this driveway. We're cutting down lots of trees, we're having all kinds of things, we're going to try to get this thing in, but if it doesn't work from the get-go and that point, you know, we go, you go back to Wetlands, but it's still not going to work with engineering. So you're, it seems to me, you have to start at one place and get that resolved. And I think if we're going any farther with this, I would love to have that happen because, you know, we saw the same thing. I don't think there's really any kind of significant difference, other than maybe the, I guess, the landscaping that was done on Round Hill Road is less formal, right?
And much more robust. We have a lot more plants going in, a lot more trees going in.
If the septic systems work, the health department said, fine. This new alternate is the first bump in the road. Get that resolved first to me, for me, and then I think we should move from that point.
Right.
Let's see, because I think what Marguerite read into the, from the letter back on February 15th caught my eye also. And I think that she was asking, or it was being, her request for additional information-
This is Director Sesto.
No, but writing in response to her, she requested information. And one of the things that she was concerned about is the information on this driveway. And she said, to substantiate your position, basically your position of we couldn't make a driveway and there meet the design manual. We today have in our, at least, a note from the, Scott Marucci, who says, perhaps it can meet the design requirements of the town's manual.
As he says, may be, may be possible.
Maybe possible. Whatever the words. The fact of the matter is, it was a cogent point of interest for Wetlands when they made their decision. If you were providing information to them, saying this alternate road system can't work because, now if DPW turns around and says, hey, I think it can work if, that's a different ballgame.
Except for the fact, Mr. Chairman, that if we locate it in another location, we have to still cut down trees, some significant specimen trees. We are building it closer to the Wetlands, which will impact a very viable wetland corridor that's on our property that we are looking to protect. And we have a driveway that meets the town requirements for grade and for sightlines that the Wetland Agency has already approved. So I'm wondering, why would, why would they ever change from what they've approved when they have something that protects the Wetlands by a distance of over 100 feet?
Do you have, the last, the last time you were here, and you did not have a motion carry to approve this. Did you file with Z B A?
Yes, we have an appeal of your prior decision.
You've got an appeal going while you're before us with different information and so forth. So when do you expect to hear? I think we're kind of-
We expect to be on the June 14th Z B A agenda. And I will state for the record, if we have an approval here, we will be withdrawing that And on the point of this driveway on Round Hill Road, I think it's important to realize what's there in relation to what we're protecting elsewhere on the site by constructing this driveway. And at the last hearing, we had Bob Horan, a arborist, and also the tree warden for the town of New Canaan, speak to you. And I want to go over his report briefly, and Mr. Horan's here to review it with you. I, it's important that I have that as part of this record as well, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. My name is Bob Horan. I'm a licensed arborist, also the tree warden in New Canaan. My report on that area off of Round Hill Road where the proposed driveway is coming in is an area that is visually dominated by some very tall white pines that have grown together in a grove. As they've grown this way, they've grown with a very relatively small trunk in relation to the height of the tree, with the crown of the tree where all the branches are at the very top. When trees grow like this, especially the pine trees, they're a fairly weak wood and are very prone to wind throw. White pines have a tendency to break off somewhere along the trunk of the tree, not uproot, as maybe some other types of trees will do. Depending on where that break will be, whether it's near the top or near the bottom, could depend on the devastation that these trees, or the hazard that they, that they could produce. Something breaking off at the top, although the area of damage might not be very area-wise, but the velocity of that, top of that tree coming down can be fairly devastating, where in conjunction, if the tree broke off towards the bottom, or you might not get the velocity, but the area of damage can be a lot longer and wider. The other trees in that area are primarily saplings. It looks to me that this area was probably cleared out of all understory growth, probably sometime in the 80s, judging by the age of the saplings and some of the trees that have been in there. So it really wasn't natural for probably quite a while. The trees that came in are primarily maple saplings, a mixture of Norway maple. There are some sugar maple saplings and some other invasive, some alliantis, devil's walking As far as deciduous trees along Round Hill Road, there are some sassafras, a couple of ash trees, and one large sugar maple that does have a nice crown, but unfortunately a large vertical crack down the base of the trunk, which makes this a hazardous tree also. The trees along Round Hill Road are, have been misshapen by the utility pruning because the wires are along that side of the road. The sassafras is considered a weedy tree. The ash trees will be declining. They've been declining over 30, 40 years in this area, and they're going to be declining even further with the invasive emerald ash borer now in the area. So it's just a matter of time before these trees will be dying also. In other words, the trees in this area are really not worth anything economically, and if a driveway was put in there with the possibility of pedestrian traffic and vehicle traffic, these trees can be hazardous.
Could be what?
Hazardous to those because of what I stated before, the potential of breaking. And you can see by some of those pictures that that's already started happening, and it's just a matter of time before some of the other trees will be, have the same fate.
Mr. Horan, do you know, or can you give us any information about how old these trees might be?
Some of the older ones, I would guess somewhere 80, 90 years old.
Okay.
Not taking a core. And then probably the, of the tallest pines are 80, 90, and then the other pines would probably maybe 50, 60. I can estimate that.
Would this be something that you would see naturally occurring?
Those trees, yes. That probably was a fairly forested area before these houses were built, or that bank. The pines have thinned out since then, whether naturally or cut years ago. And again, like I said, that understory was managed in the past, so it's not a virgin area by any means. Difficult to say whether those pines were planted years and years ago. I don't think so, but I can't say for sure, because I don't know the whole history of it.
I've heard it discussed that the Norway and the sugar maples are non-native, and it's more of, like I say, it's kind of a weed tree.
The Norway maples are. The sugar maples are native.
Yeah.
But in the process of them growing and that all clumped together?
I think that the battery went out on the microphone. It sounded good.
Yeah.
His voice is strong.
As I understand it, it's the Norways are invasive?
Correct.
Okay.
But the sugars are not?
The native trees in there are some sugar maple saplings, well, a big sugar maple, and another medium-sized one, another maybe 12-inch sugar maple that is growing in the understory. Because it's growing in that understory, it's got a misshapen crown, not a very aesthetically pleasing tree. Same with most of the saplings. They're crowded, invasive. And the proposal to replant this area with native species of maples, evergreens, I think, looking at it down the road, down the, in the future, it's going to be a big improvement on that hillside. I have to go through these decisions all the time as tree warden, taking down trees that have outlived their usefulness. And it's not decisions I make lightly. There's a lot of factors I take in, and replacement is one of them. And you got to look down the road. My philosophy is, the best time to plant a tree was 20 years ago. Second-best time is today. And by redoing this hillside with native species is aesthetically pleasing and much better for the area and wildlife.
In your, in your summation or your letter to us, it concludes that there are no salvageable trees in this area, and they all should be removed.
Correct.
The last time you were here, we tried to draw-
It was the same report, the last time.
Well, we drew a line around what you considered to be no salvageable trees, and we ended up with 70 or 80, or how many trees? We came up the hill farther than I thought you would be coming up the tree.
I did not count all the trees because I guess-
No, but if I remember, you, in addition to the, where the road is and everything, the obvious places, that you were coming back up further towards the proposed houses with trees that you felt should be removed. As far as I know, they are being shown as removed. I know that we're seeing on this drawing-
The primary area where the driveway is, is in this area here, but there are some pines up in here, and these are, again, those tall, big pines that are some real problems.
Okay. You don't, you just don't recall the number, because we did come up with a number, but I can't recall it at the time.
No.
It was, kind of surprised me even, but go ahead.
As far as the pines, I estimated somewhere in the 30 range. But again, I don't trust my counting when you get a little turned around once in a while.
Thank you.
And just for the record, this report was submitted to us at the March 21 meeting as well. It's a report that Mr. Horan gave us then, from his visit on March 9th.
Any other questions, the commissioners?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horan.
Hey, you brought up Mr. Frangione's letter to Pat Sesto.
Mm-hmm. I did.
Did you get copies of what he submitted? Because this was the cover page of what he submitted.
Well, the whole letter is, the whole letter is-
I didn't have the whole copy in the-
Oh, they don't like-
Yeah, it's fairly, and he goes, and he goes into the, well, she asked seven questions.
Right.
And he goes point by point on the seven questions.
And you were concerned about the driveway. What was his response to the driveway and his response?
His response has been that it does not meet the town drainage manual. That's the thing. Now we have Scott saying, perhaps.
It does. So they told-
I just think it needs, obviously-
That was the point I was trying to make, that they told Wetlands that they couldn't do it because it didn't meet DPW. But DPW was saying, well, maybe it could. And so that, that circle never got closed. Different people had different pieces of information.
Well, but Scott is also reviews everything for Wetlands. And you're saying he didn't review this letter?
What Patrick says is that he never saw the alternative driveway plan or feasibility, that he didn't have any information on it.
I'm looking to Mr. Hegney to just confirm, yes or no, but my understanding that there were several alternatives presented to the Wetlands Agency.
And DPW did not see them.
Only two of them, I believe, went through Mr. Marucci, I believe, after the Wetlands Agency looked at it, staff.
Mr. Frangione, I think, had something like nine-
But not all of them.
Alternatives for the Wetland Agency. They, they're into alternatives. And so we provided them with many. And-
They're trying to find the best path. I mean-
Well, and the one that we have before you is the one that the Wetland Agency voted to approve, has the best plan.
I got that, but-
Information which may or may not be accurate today.
So the question, Matt King, has Mr. Marucci seen this driveway location?
Now he has, and he's asking-
And under Wetlands?
No.
We submitted to the Wetlands. I don't know whether he saw it as part of the Wetlands application or not. He did submit it to them as part of their request for additional information.
Staff is saying, getting back to what I said before, Mr. Marucci has not seen this driveway.
Until now.
Mr. Marucci has not seen the data that Mr. Frangione has just collected. Like I said before, it's got to go right back to Mr. Marucci, just start there.
That's what I said about half an hour ago.
Exactly. Okay, so here we are, half an hour later. Let's-
It's like-
Get this to Mr. Marucci and get that resolved.
If all the different staff departments would just look at the same piece of paper and everybody land on something in agreement, we have a resubmit from DPW. Telling us stuff without getting closure from DPW doesn't move you forward. And that's where I'm baffled that, I mean, in my mind, that's what you need to do. You need to get closure with Scott Marucci, get closure with DPW. I mean, we're saying the same thing.
Yeah, and I think you also need to hear his comments regarding the modifications we made to the plan that's in front of you, based on his comments in February. And why you didn't get that for something that was submitted over a month ago, I don't know.
February, related to an effort that failed to carry. Now we have a new, you're now de novo. You're here anew. You are presenting a lot of the same information and the same plans, but we now have a resubmit from DPW. I mean, you know it, I know it. I don't know why we keep saying it to you. That's what's got to be fixed.
We're happy to meet with Mr. Marucci and go over this information and the additional information that we have from the test holes today that Mr. Frangione will put together, and we will meet with Mr. Marucci.
Without asking you for 12 alternatives, we're trying to find also the path to what's the best all-around approach. And we're not trying to make it difficult for you. I mean, I know I'm sounding frustrated only because I feel like I'm hearing the same information all over. I'm hearing a lot of the same things. And I know you have to do that.
Some of it is the same, but the information that was just from today's test holes is new.
And it was helpful to hear Mr. Pops, the more intensive landscaping that we had requested, that was helpful. But again, that there were issues that were raised that were not addressed. So there we leave it. I think, we keep saying the same thing to you, you got to get DPW on board.
Fine, let's, we can move on then.
Almost 11 years.
Yes, without prolonging the hearing further, we will meet with Mr. Marucci and would ask that you leave this open.
Well, we, I believe, we have probably-
I'm sure there's going to be some public comments.
I suspect as well.
Any comment from the public?
Okay, sir.
Are there a lot of people from the public who want to comment? Okay, we're going to have to have a time limit on, on- Okay, we're going to have to have a time limit on, on, on the, on the public. I guess Denise, since you're heading up one of the town agencies who's got some, could we keep it to like five minutes for you?
Absolutely.
Perfect, and three minutes for the other people? All I need is, my timer is gone.
Victoria? Dennis, Dennis is your seated alternate.
Have you got it? Thank you.
Three minutes, no, five minutes and then three minutes.
No, I'm good with Nick. I just, I always look to Peter Levy for the timing, so thank you.
So it's Nick?
Nick's got it. Thank you, go.
Okay. Good evening, I'm Denise Savageo, I'm the Conservation Director for the Town of Greenwich. I'm here reporting on behalf of the Conservation Commission, which reviewed this application again on May 4th. Just quickly, you have all our reports, you see how many times it's been before, the Conservation Commission, and the Conservation Commission unanimously voted once again to recommend denial of this application as presented. And the commission strongly stated, because we had recommended conservation zone, which is a viable alternative for this site, however, that they can accomplish removing the access off of Round Hill and doing the access off of Lake Ave, which is their main premise, without a conservation zone, and they wanted to make sure that the commission was aware of that. Just wanted to quickly review the report. There seems to be, the Conservation Commission understands that this is not the best forest area in terms of health, but you heard that the wetland needed to be restored, and the Conservation Commission is saying the same thing about the hillside. The main concern about the hillside is the steepness of the slope and removing the vegetation and developing the slope. It's not just about that we have a pristine or a robust forest there. And the recommendation is to avoid that slope, maintain the forest, and do a forest restoration plan if we want to get rid of some of those invasive species, and to make that even more robust to protect the slope. And specifically, if you go into my report, I, I did list the areas where the plan of conservation and development specifically talks about this. Page nine, preserving existing topography, and page 10, protect and plant trees, shrubs and vegetation. So I won't go into everything in my report, I, you know, so in, from a time perspective, but just wanted to make sure that you review, you look at that, because it really cites that for you. Again, it's the cut and fill that takes place to install the road and the proposed drainage. And, and that, I think that's really important. We really need to think about how this is going to impact that whole hillside, and one of the things we still don't have is all of the details, as far as I know, in terms of how that drainage plan will work, specifically during construction. How are we going to handle stormwater during construction? And that, you know, on that hillside. The non-compliance with the, with the low-impact development sections of the drainage manual, I provided you with all of the information, including the drainage manual. I just want to make sure it says, the fundamental concepts, number one, prevent then mitigate, prevent first, and that has to do with voiding the steep slope. So one of the premises here is that it doesn't meet the drainage manual because it's not meeting the RRV. And there's a, and as far as the Conservation Commission is concerned, it's not meeting the drainage manual because it's not doing the basic fundamental of the drainage manual. And Scott Marucci's report, as of May, as of his March report that he submitted, and I'll get into this in detail, basically said that it would be acceptable to the Engineering Department not to meet the RRV if they did some of the other low-impact development, including avoidance of slope. And I think that that's something that we really need to pay attention to and look at that, because they're hanging their hat and saying, oh, we can't meet the RRV calculation. And so there's two reports from Engineering, not just the most recent report, which is important in terms of saying it may be possible to meet the RRV, but actually in their March report saying Engineering would find it acceptable if it didn't meet the RRV, as long as some other, you know, criteria was met. And I think that that's a really important distinction. So I just wanted to reiterate, the Conservation Commission has, is really looking at that. I think you all know that the leadership on the Conservation Commission includes Bill Rutherford, who is a licensed landscape architect, in, understands the value of the trees, understands and did a site walk, understands what trees will be taking down, and, and that, you know, there is a trade-off here. The other person is Eric Brower, who, as our vice chair, understands the planning and zoning regulations, used to be one of the town planners here, knows the regs, and feels that there is an alternative to this site, and they strongly recommend that as, as the leadership. I happen to have not been at the meeting because of some issues at, at May 4th, and I think that the applicant heard loud and clear from Conservation that we really need to look at this alternative site plan in terms of that road and making sure that the road doesn't go there.
May I interrupt you for just a second? Do you have a comment on?
It's Richard talking now, so it's okay.
A short extension. Do you have a comment on the trees being removed that had been identified? Do you, had, did you get a chance to look at that where the new road is coming in, early part of Mr. Pops' presentation about the removal of those trees?
Yeah, so the Conservation Commission understands there's a trade-off, and what they're saying is that there's some trees that need to come out, but the, they're really, and that's the point, is it's not just about the trees, it's about protecting the steep slope, which is their, their biggest concern.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Oh, oh, just quickly, Bill Rutherford was concerned about the planting plan, it's in my report, and had raised issues about the possible, you know, with the, increasing the size of the trees and increasing that planting plan, that you may have to blast into that hillside to actually put those trees in. And he had some real concerns about how that planting plan would be put in place, and he expressed those concerns to the applicant, and I think it's important for you to understand that as well.
So what I've understand from the testimony in your report, most of the trees on the hillsides are Norway maples, which are invasive. There's maybe one or two sugar maples that are, you would like to keep, but down here where this new road is, there are 20 major species trees that your commission says not a problem, losing 24-inch oaks, and you feel trading the hillside for those massive trees is worth it?
Because we feel that the.
I'm saying, did you actually review?
We walked, we walked the whole site, and we understand, and we understand where the option is, and one of the things is that there are ways to adjust the road a little bit this way or that way, so we would have to say like, okay, you know, can you avoid, you know, can you reconfigure the road a little bit to avoid a tree?
I don't, that's what we're looking at, and we're trying to understand your testimony because.
So why would?
If the road's here, why do all those trees have to come out?
Because those are where also the driveways are. You have to look at the, the planning plan.
I'm just saying.
Well, you can't look at that plan per se.
Yeah.
Because it's oriented towards Round Hill.
Right.
You have to look to their other plan, which is oriented towards Lake and Shrinkham.
Right.
Exactly, and I think that, I think that, yeah.
When you look at the footprints, there's a substantial difference between these footprints, and if you flip back to the, to the other drawings for the Wetlands, the footprints of those buildings.
I understand, but I'm saying the trees were the proposed roadways going.
No, I know.
And that's what I wanted her to come at.
And Conservation, and Conservation did look at that. We said, if we, if we, if we're recommending this, what does this mean? And this was walked over, this isn't staff, and basically felt that the, the road could go in, we know that there would be some trees, but we didn't feel that it was important. But, but understand that it's not just about the individual tree here. If we were just talking about the, an individual tree or species, what we're, the, the main concern is about the hillside, the potential erosion for the hillside and impacting the whole watershed corridor, and that's what they're, that's what the main concern is.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sue Baker, and I'm on the Conservation Commission for the Town of Greenwich, the Shellfish Commission for the Town of Greenwich. I'm on the Greenwich Land Trust Advisory Board, and I'm on the Greenwich Tree Conservancy Advisory Board, but I'm speaking as a citizen. And this is my eighth appearance for this. Three at Wetlands, two at Conservation, two here already, and my same theme has been, if you're going to err, you must err on the side of Conservation. I am passionate about the problems in this proposed project, and as much respect and I have for Tom, for Matt, for Rob, I know that they know in their heart of hearts, this is the wrong plan for this project, for this site. Because, let's quickly look at the things that have been brought up. Nobody needs to hear a lecture on photosynthesis and how valuable the trees are, and that they take out all the carbon dioxide and provide all the oxygen and all that, but their value is that they've been there all along for 80 or 90 years, and they have stabilized, whether they're the most beautiful trees or not, and to take out 23 large trees to make the round hill road driveway is, means destumping. And as Bill Rutherford said, and it has already been mentioned, that there is a very shallow ledge there. Rob, Rob said that, a shallow ledge, shallow soil to the ledge. Well, then, maybe you cannot really plant all these big trees that you want to call as part of your robust planting without further destroying the ledge by grinding that down. Matt talked about all the wonderful wildlife in the Wetlands area. What are you going to do about the wildlife that you're totally going to destroy their habitat if you put that driveway down to Round Hill Road? Not just the 23 big trees, not just the erosion issues, not just the denigration of the slope, but the wildlife corridor you are going to totally destroy. And someone else has alluded to a rational, prudent alternative, that was Tom. Going for the new driveway on Round Hill Road is not a rational or prudent alternative to the much, much less damage done as you expand the 500 Lake Avenue existing driveway. So this new, this new presentation, application is not about an altered lot line or slightly smaller houses. It is still all about the driveway. There were, there were a couple of young men here, all dressed up, seventh and eighth graders, they wanted to speak for Conservation, they had to go home, and the only thing I would tell you that they said to me is, we learn in school about preservation of habitat, preservation of trees, protection, conservation, that's what's wrong with this project, but they had to leave because they have school tomorrow.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I had a very fancy slideshow to show you, and my son's passcode just went off. But I was, my name is Tamara Ingal, and I have lived in Greenwich 24 years. I lived at 26 Round Hill Road, which is directly across from the driveway site that's proposed. And in addition, I am also an advisory board member, advisory council member for the Greenwich Land Trust, was chair of their stewardship program. I'm a Realtor in town, and I have a background in operations management, and probably because of that, I was very interested in some of the conditions, particularly with regard to the road and safety. Having lived at 26 Round Hill Road for eight years, when my children were younger, I lived there from 96 to 80 to 2004, I can just tell you, the traffic is so bad. Cars are whizzing up and down Round Hill Road, and the visibility is really hard. And when I first heard that there was going to be a proposed driveway, I didn't know any of the setting issues or anything, you know, the conservation issues, the first thing in my mouth was, oh my gosh, what a terrible place to put a driveway. You can't see, there's a blind curve coming up ahead, and I'm not just saying this, well, I am saying this off the top of my head from my own experience, how many close calls I had coming and going out of that driveway so many times, and I had better visibility on the other side of the road. But yesterday, my 23-year-old son and I took a tape measure and some stopwatch down to Round Hill Road, and we did a time study, and we monitored a lot of cars at about 4:00 in the afternoon, and we were able to, in general, find out that the average speed of the cars coming from the south, coming from town. When you stood in the area where the driveway was proposed to be, we marked off where was the first spot that you could see a car come over the hill, and we timed it, and of course, there's a range of times depending on how fast the cars were going. There was, the slowest car was 27, the fastest was 42 miles an hour, the speed limit's 30, the average speed was 34 miles per hour. From my studies, which were very consistent, you had about four seconds, and even if you gave yourself an extra 20 or 30 feet, maybe six seconds. Now, that was in perfectly blue-sky conditions, and, you know, I've been on Round Hill Road where it's icy, there's sheets of water that come down Round Hill Road. We actually had to build up the top of our driveway because there was so much water coming down Round Hill Road to keep it from coming down our, our steep driveway. And during our time studies, often, we found that there were, we did two 10-minute samples, there were 70, a total of 70 cars that went up and down, 35 minutes, 35 from each direction. And just to wrap it up, I'll just say, oftentimes, there were trucks that were coming down, and right behind the trucks were two or three cars. And if a car pulled out, not only is it dangerous for the people in the driveway, it's dangerous, I think, for the drivers coming down the hill. You really can't, they can't see very well either. And if a truck was coming down, there were two or three cars right behind the truck, and suddenly a truck sees a car and slows down, I mean, that's a hazard. And if somebody tried to go left to avoid hitting somebody coming out of the driveway, the cars coming up from Round Hill, from the merit, coming up from there, it's, it's just, it's a crazy safety issue, and I, I know a lot of people have spoken to the Conservation issues, but I live there, I know what it's like, I've had, there were close calls, I was in and out of that driveway many times, and that left side is a real blind spot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Janet McKenzie. I'm a co-president of the Round Hill Association, and I've spoken before about driving down Round Hill Road and being concerned about the dangers of the driveway, just as Tamara said. The other thing that I noticed tonight, everyone was talking about the pine trees, which are trees that most people dismissed in terms of importance. The one thing that I want to say about those pine trees, which are on top of the hill as you're driving south, is that they shelter drivers from the sunlight. In between about 10:30 in the morning and 1:30 in the afternoon, you come around a corner and you're hit with brilliant sunlight. And if you take those trees out, there is no protection from the sun for drivers, and it is a sudden jump from relative obscurity to dazzling light. The Conservation Department, or Conservation Commission, rejected this application, and what I wanted to say is, the town has a COPD. If we don't pay attention to the, the, uh, POCD, if we don't pay attention to it, what's the point of having it? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Maitland and fellow commissioners.
Good evening, Mr. Maitland and fellow commissioners. I'm Valerie Stoffer. I've served on the RTM for several decades. I was chairman of District 7, where this particular Round Hill Road access will be. I retired a few months ago, but I'm still very concerned with town issues. I want to take you back to, I've appeared before you and Wetlands a number of times because we've had, when my constituents call, have called in the past, and they say, "A developer wants to do something in my district, what should I do?" The first thing I always have said is, "Oh, hire an attorney, hire a soil expert, hire traffic engineers, and a hydrologist." In this case, there are not a lot of neighbors, and then there's who, unlike some of the things when they're 30, 40 homeowners, who can give thousands of dollars. We're dealing with the people who are speaking, a few neighbors, and the Land Trust and the Round Hill Association. You can't expect them to come up with the thousands of dollars. And I sat here tonight listening, and I feel we're at the subject to, at a disadvantage because it's hard to refute the fact that perhaps there are more birds in one section of the meadow than in another, where a road might go. Who knows where the birds are? But I'd like just you to listen that there's somewhere between, you don't really need a hydrologist to tell you that if you rip out 23 to 30 trees from a very steep burn, there's going to be a lot of runoff. There already is. It's drainage that's going to affect the homeowners. You don't need a traffic engineer to tell you that you put this 55-foot driveway just around a curve on a very busy street, and there are going to be accidents waiting to happen. And you don't need an environmental lawyer to tell you, "Hey, let's look and consider a driveway in Lake Avenue where there has been, where the topography is much simpler and easier to deal with." So please, I feel we're at a disadvantage without having hired a lot of experts, but please consider all the aspects. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Baron Snyder, District 7, RTM, and a resident of Round Hill for most of my life. Thank you for letting me speak. And thank you also for all the time and work you devote to the PNC Commission. We are so lucky to have such capable and devoted citizens who give their time to make sure this town remains a very special place. I really appreciate it, and people don't, people have no idea, so I try to tell them whenever I can. I'm just going to quickly say that I just, since we don't have the expert opinions, I just want to support what's already been said. As a resident of Round Hill, I walk Round Hill, top to bottom, every day. I do six to eight miles. And so I'm very familiar with the neighborhood and the traffic, and it is heavy and fast, at least 45 miles an hour, and they just come flying right by me, grazing my arm practically. So there is no concern for, as the drivers go by. And so I am concerned with that kind of traffic and the bad corners, the bad visibility, that a driveway would be very poorly situated there. There's, there was a mention of the wildlife on another part of the property, but in that meadow, you have tremendous wildlife. And I was walking about a year ago, it was right after heavy snow, and I came around the corner coming, going towards Lake Avenue. I came around the corner by that meadow, and I thought, "My God, who would have thrown red paint all over the snow in that driveway? That's obnoxious." And then it dawned on me, it was blood, it was horrible. And it, obviously, it had been a deer, a huge, huge mess. So accidents are happening there. And what about the meadow? We keep losing our scenic views and majestic old trees that take decades to grow, iconic old homes that give this town its beauty and charm and draw people to live here. It's a shame to think about cutting down all those trees and cutting the ridge down. So it makes no sense to me to go through all that trouble when you can, I don't know, when maybe you could find another direction to go. I just want to mention, in our POCD, on page 18, Round Hill Road is mentioned as a road that should be included in the list of scenic roads. There are scenic sites and scenic roads. Round Hill is not officially designated one, and I'm happy to work on that, to make an inventory of these trees as we go forward with the new POCD. But I just please ask you to deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Baron.
Hello. I'm Hillary Gunn, RTM Vice Chair, District 7. I'm here tonight in my capacity, both as a representative and a neighbor, as I live roughly a mile away on Zachias Mead. And as you know, Round Hill falls within my district. I strongly oppose the proposed driveway. I'm going to skip a lot of the things I had to say because the others have covered it so well. But it is wrong to both destroy this beautiful hillside, which we have so little of anymore, and put residents in danger, simply so that, in my opinion, the applicant can secure a more desirable address. I drive this portion of Round Hill Road several times a week, and it's one of the more dangerous stretches in the area, particularly given the suitability of the driveway on Lake Avenue. I see no valid reason this proposal should move forward, and I hope you'll agree. Thank you for your time.
I'll be brief. My name is Gary Silverberg. I'm on the Conservation Commission. And I would just like to point out, in the report from Denise Savageau of March 7th, items number four and five, specifically item number four, the phasing plan is absolutely backwards, as it's being proposed for the current driveway, in that the houses will go in first, and then the driveway will take the drainage out that way toward Round Hill. So for the period of time that there is no driveway, where's the drainage supposed to go? It's all going to accumulate and not be directed properly.
Good evening. My name is James Carr. I'm a member of the Greenwich Land Trust. And what I'm hearing tonight from the applicant is that they're trading off two different wetlands. And the wetland near Lake Avenue has been described to you as high value, and the wetland on the Allen Meadow is low value. Mr. Pop has stated that he looked at the Allen Meadow, didn't see much going on there. I would question how closely he got to the meadow and how much time he spent there. The Allen Meadow is private property. Did he go down into the meadow? Did he really spend time and examine things? Or did he look at it through binoculars?
Who did you say?
Mr. Pop.
Oh.
You started, he said.
Yeah, I was going.
In 2011.
And I had to second guess.
2011, I was the chairman of the stewardship committee, land stewardship committee of the Greenwich Land Trust. In that role, it was my responsibility to have a management plan drawn up for the Allen Meadow. Actually, it's the Allen property, because it's more than just a meadow. The Allen property also consists of the ridgeline and wooded area above the meadow. When we had a management plan written, we actually sent people down to spend time and study the flora and fauna, and the inventory, all the flora and fauna in the meadow. I'll just read you briefly what they found in terms of the fauna. They found Canada geese, songbirds like cardinals, barred and screech owls, woodpeckers. During visits in 1983 survey, 34 species of birds were observed. The property was also known to contain a variety of amphibians, reptiles, garter snakes, small mammals, chipmunks, raccoons, deer, and a variety of insects and microorganisms, small fish, and species of freshwater mussel. This Allen property is very rich in biodiverse property. It's actually, technically, it's a wet meadow, which means it has to be mowed once a year. And by mowing, and by, and also the meadow is hydrated most of the year. So from the soil species, microorganisms, on up into the species inhabiting the place, we have vegetation that offers food, water, and shelter to a wide variety of creatures. Also, the ridgeline, forested ridgeline, offers a corridor connecting places north, other nature preserves north of the property. So this is a very richly productive and ecologically important part of Greenwich. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Two more.
My name is John Nelson. I live across Round Hill Road from the proposed driveway. I come because this is a new application, but to save time, I would like to repeat and reiterate all of the comments I'd made in the previous hearing. If you would accept that, I can sit down.
Can we do that?
Mr. Nelson, are your comments in the letter that you submitted?
Yes.
We have the letter for the record.
We have the letter, so we're good. Thank you. And thanks for staying to say that.
Commissioner, you said DPW.
Excuse me, you have to use the microphone and your name.
Deep Leonard Marks.
Thanks.
This is John Nelson's house, and this is the spur going off of the owned property. You said the DPW has approved this, is that correct?
They have not approved it yet, correct.
And how about the fire department?
The fire department has not reviewed this at this time, no.
Well, can I suggest that, this is very important, because we had a situation a few years ago where a driveway was going to be moved, and I called the fire department, they came over here, and they said, "No way, because we would have no access." It seems to me that this is the first thing that should be determined, is whether the fire department, I'm talking about Round Hill Road now.
Right.
You've all been there, I assume, and you know the terrain and everything else. If they're not going to approve this Round Hill Road, it saves everybody an awful lot of time.
Okay.
And the second, very quick, quick thing I'll say is, I don't understand how this could be in the best interest of the town of Greenwich or the residents, this whole project. I think you're just, they're trying to force something. Maybe the two homes would work, but not the three. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Just a couple of comments, Ms. Chairman. What I've put on the board is our site distance analysis for the proposed drive on Round Hill Road. It shows 400 feet of site distance in each direction. It also does a profile to make sure that there's no hump in the road and that you have a clear sight. And I would agree, the average speed is about 34 miles an hour. And with these sightlines of 400 feet, it's more than adequate to meet the town's traffic requirements.
That's slow.
The.
Mark Casey.
We're happy to review this with the fire department, by the way. The Land Trust actually did retain an expert. They hired Dr. Stephen Danzer, who is an environmental consultant and a prior staff member of the Wetland Agency. He prepared a report in February and actually came to the Wetland meeting and presented his report and his findings on the protection of the wetland to the, to the west on the Land Trust property. And even with his comments, the Wetland Agency approved this, and the main concern was that we stay at least 100 feet from the wetland on the other site. He also expressed an issue of whether this would be providing too much stormwater to the Land Trust property. And the Wetland Agency was satisfied that, given the drainage plan that we have, that there would not be additional runoff going to the Land Trust property. I would add that Horse Neck Brook runs through the Land Trust property. The pond that is in the southerly part of Lot 4 also feeds into a drainage system which crosses Round Hill Road and then ties in to Horse Neck Brook. So all of the flow from the site, one way or another, gets to Horse Neck Brook and flows south toward the sound. The other item I wanted to address was brought up a couple of times, was on the phasing. And we spent a good deal of time discussing that particular issue with the Wetland Agency. And condition 10 of their approval says, "In accordance with testimony, no portion of the common driveway shall be constructed until certificate of occupancies are issued for lots 2 and 3. Construction shall be limited to dry season, being July through September. The agency authorizes their staff to alter these requirements if weather or other conditions deem it in the best interest of protecting wetlands and watercourses." So that was very much an issue with the Wetland Agency, that we do the construction for lots 2 and 3 before that driveway is constructed, and therefore, it's not being used as a construction entrance and disrupted before the plantings can be put in. And we were estimating about four to six weeks to actually construct the driveway off of Round Hill Road to those lots 2 and 3. We will meet with the town engineer and address the concerns you expressed earlier. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one comment, as I think it would be something made. There's been a lot of discussion about what the Wetland Agency has done and that what they expect the Wetland Director to do. And my proposal is that we meet with Scott Marucci, with the Conservation Director, the Wetland Director, planning and zoning staff. Previously, what had happened was the applicant called up Mr. Marucci and made, had a discussion just with him. I think you need all the staff in the room, and I will offer to set that up with Patrick so that we all are in the room at the same time. Thank you.
Mr. Hegney, are you in? Yes?
Sounds like quite the party, I wouldn't want to miss it.
Okay. Thank you.
Somebody bring them doughnuts.
What?
I'd miss it.
All right, this item is left open to a future hearing. Now, item number 10, Mr. Hegney? We're not going to be hearing that. How are you?
Thank you for reminding me, Ms. Chairman, we do have another application here. I didn't see the need for going into it much further than to say.
You don't have a lot to put it on yet.
We have, we have the septic approval from the Health Department, you know, and it's a house in excess of 150,000 square feet and meets all the zoning criteria.
I think if we can find a lot for you to put it on, it'll probably be.
Well, we have a lot to put it on. We're looking for the lots for 2 and 3, Ms. Chairman.
I don't know, the application to us says you've got a lot of a certain size.
We certainly have enough lot area of zoning.
We certainly have enough lot area of zoning, lot area, to construct this dwelling.
So, we'll leave it open. I think it's just...
Yes, if you could.
Must close by.
And just incorporate whatever comments staff gave you whenever you come by.
Mr. Chair, can I just ask two questions of the applicant? When is... Excuse me. Excuse me.
Folks, we're still trying to work here.
Excuse me. We're still in a meeting, please. Thank you. Mr. Hegney, when is that date for the ZBA again specifically?
I expect it to be June 14th.
Okay. So, I just... We have two meetings between now and then, so if we could just talk about scheduling at some point in the future, that'd be good.
I plan on having that discussion with you hopefully tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 12, Peter Wellington, Melinda Wellington.
Mr. Chair, could we...
I know Mr. Yaski walked out for a second. I'll let them set up or something. I think he'll be right back.
Where did he go?
I don't know. He just said, "Just a minute." I guess one finger is just a minute.
Nashville, 1.
What?
2 to 1.
Because I say I hate the ducks.
Nashville, 1-0 after the first...
Well, that's good, because the last time they came and scored those three goals. Oh, my God. No, you just went.
Nashville scored a shorthanded goal with about 3 minutes.
I may have to after another applicant.
Short-handed. Wow. Would have been exciting.
No, I'm sorry. A power play, sorry.
Not as exciting, but still.
No, but it was pretty good, you.
Okay, I'm sorry. If Yaski's going to go, I'm going to go too. I'm sorry. I'm going to go get some more water. I'm sorry. And you can start without me and see some...
Okay. We'll just have to wait a couple of minutes. We have some older members here on the commission.
I know it's tough.
Pretty good one. Yeah, let's go off the record for a couple of minutes. Who knows what'll be said?
How about the last comment?
Who said that?
You guys want any of these? I get obsessed with the salt. We're going to lose everybody.
Everybody tries to color code, makes it even more complex.
Remember the good old days.
Maybe.
We should have a color code.
A method to the madness.
Well, we need a color code, a template, so we understand what it means with each version.
That's right. Orange for sewer, green for planting. I don't see any green up there.
Long, long time ago, Bob Duvall from... You remember Bob Duvall, right?
Who?
Yes. Bob Allen, Bob. He had this platoon. He was always chewing tobacco. He would get up, ramble up, just say, "I have no problem with the staff report." He wouldn't even wait for the commission members to ask him questions and go sit back down. It worked.
Good old days.
Got us out of there. I was going to try to say...
That's when the staff reports are a little shorter.
So comprehensive that really was.
They're one page. The old staff reports were one page.
Thank you. I couldn't go because I was talking to you before. I always get blamed for everything.
Yeah, I know.
What I do?
She said she could start.
No, you shouldn't. Okay.
Okay.
We're back on the record.
This, for the record, John Tessie, here this evening with Mr. DeAndrea and Mr. Ridberg in connection with the application for a construction of a two-family dwelling at 27 Woodland Drive. I have up front of you a site plan which you are familiar with. The subject property is shown on a 5, 5,300 square foot lot on the west side of the site plan, south side of Woodland Drive. As the commission members, I'm sure, recall, you approved for the adjacent two properties at 25 and 23 Woodland. That was both through lots running from Woodland to Railroad Avenue. A development on each of three units, a two-family house on the north, single-family house on the south. Part and parcel of that application was a common parking lot and common drainage. A lot of time was spent to work out the new sidewalk that our client is constructing over an easement area to the town, and we are bringing a new sewer line all the way down from this property to Art Street, to the east. The proposal this evening is for this new two-family home to share that driveway for 23 and 25, which runs through the two north buildings. And that driveway, then, through an accessway, will run to the rear of the 27 Woodland property. There are basically a three-car garage in the rear of that building. Drainage, which has been approved as noted in the staff report by Mr. Marucci for this property, involves basically a combination with the drainage for 23 and 27. Mr. Marucci is right, points out in his comments that we will need to provide easements, cross-easements, that now take into account not only 23 and 25 for sewer and for stormwater and access, but also 27. And we certainly accept the concept that those easements will be provided and that they would be subject to the approval of staff of the zoning commission, DPW, and the law department. There are two parking spaces proposed for the front of 27. On its western side, there is a landscape plan, which I don't believe you have seen, but it was requested by staff. We can leave this here. It's essentially hot off the presses, where there will be similar screening for 27 to what was approved for 23 Woodland, where we also had front yard parking. There was a comment, which Rudy can address, of the CEO concerning about 10 feet of excess FAR, having to do with the failure to count, I guess, an upper stairway area. And Rudy is prepared to certainly reduce the plans. He has a couple of ideas how to do that. It's not that material in terms of changing what you're seeing in terms of the architecturals, but we would accept that as a condition. I could be missing something. I see there was a report from Alexandra, which seemed to be that she went to the wrong property, quite frankly, and...
It's not...
What?
Steepness on the railroad side.
Yeah, she was referring... She went out to 25. She went out to 25, where our client has commenced his construction and his demolition, his demolition of the buildings. There's no doubt... The building on 27 hasn't been demolished, nor has any activity taken place on 27. Actually, Mr. Hegney's here, represents the owner. This is a contract purchaser situation with the same developer, which I probably should have had before, as the contract purchaser. He now owns 23 and 25, Mr. Orlando, and with the approvals, hopefully this evening, he will soon own 27 and incorporate it into his project.
Mr. DeAndrea could probably answer this, but the wall which is behind the garage, south of the garage, you gave us a top elevation of that wall. You did not give us a bottom. If you did, I couldn't find it.
You're right. It's kind of buried in the property line, but it's 48-something. I'll check that elevation. So, we have 48 in the southwest corner of the property. The top of the parking lot would be 47.8. Top of the wall at the far western end is listed as 50. It's in a squared-off box. So, we're about two feet high on the far western end. South on the property, we go from bottom 46 to top 48.5. So, it's basically tapering from west to east from 50 to 48.5. We do have a step in, Mr. Maitland.
I see that, but my drawing does not have an elevation on it, so it was just...
No, I didn't give you the bottom on that, but the contour that runs through that right now is 48. So, it runs a couple of feet high, basically.
Okay, so you're raising it up?
See, the far western have an elevation.
It looks like the wall doesn't exceed, doesn't extend to the whole, to the property line.
No, it doesn't, because it tapers off. We're hitting existing grade.
So, that's existing grade there.
Yeah, we're blending up. We have to make the contours rise to catch the grade that's rising on our western side.
Okay, so we're dealing with a wall that's approximately two to three feet high?
Three at the most.
Three at the most. Thank you.
Nowhere near a grade line.
Is there something you want me to do with that?
No, it's just, I think it just should be shown on the drawings, because it's not...
Sometimes there are two plans. And the reason we do that is you can't read everything.
You put the information on one and not the other, just to catch me?
We do the drainage on one and the grading on another, so you can see the grading and then see the drainage.
Whatever.
It's on the development plan, actually, 1 of 5. Also, the utility plan, actually, 2 of 5, because it's too flooded otherwise.
Two out of three ain't bad, Tony.
We can do it all at once, but you have to...
Finding Waldo's wall. Okay.
All right. The planting plan that you put up there tonight, you're going to have to leave it with staff, because I don't think we have that planned.
Rudy, did you bring extra copies, or we just leave this?
I'll leave that one.
Okay. It's here.
There was a minor comment on the sewer. I...
We're just going to correct it.
Were you going to explain that?
Yeah, Tony can explain it.
You're going to give the correct plans?
It's already been done.
Okay.
We finished with 23, 25. We were still in discussions with engineering and sewer as to how they wanted us to do it. Subsequent to the approval of 23, 25, we prepared a separate set of sewer design plans in which we moved the manhole out of the street, and it's now located as an eccentric structure in the grass strip of the new sidewalk that we're doing. And we proposed to have the entire line replaced, and we referenced the plans that were dated April 20th that we did specifically for the sewer.
You're just going to make sure that it's the April 20th?
Yes, it's been included now in this set.
His comment was a connection, somehow the connection from those buildings into the...
Each unit has its own lateral into a main, and each lateral has a cleanout, which is what Richard usually prefers. And then we go to a manhole, because we have to break the grade due to the slope of the property. So, we have a separate manhole in order to break the grade in the structure.
Have you seen this comment?
Yes, sir.
It just says, "The proposed development plan does not match the submitted plans from 23, 25 Woodland."
What he's doing is he's recognizing that I submitted a plan afterward. We didn't change the sense to you.
Give us this 420 plan, and then he'll be good.
Right. What we did, we kept the February 24th set consistent, revised the sewer, hoping that he would approve it so we could insert it. We did, however, insert it in the final plans for number 27.
Any other commission comments? Any comments from the public?
They said they're going to correct it.
They talked about it early, and they said they were...
He's going to correct it, and supposedly they have enough room to correct the FAR.
You've got a surplus? You had a surplus before of a half a square foot, so what's the big deal?
What is the surplus?
Just hope you don't mess up the foundation.
It's probably three quarters of us who are moving up.
Says he's got enough FAR to fix it.
No, he's got to fix it. We're over the FAR. He'll take care of it. It's got to be reviewed and approved by CEO.
Yeah, we're just going to condition it.
Just leave it to yourself, Lee, right?
He didn't. It's .55, and they left out 24 square feet.
Any comments from the public?
Wait till you have to make an adaptation.
Paul Thomas is going to get up and speak in favor. No, everything's fine.
Then we'll close it.
It's you. Okay. Thank you very much.
You closed Woodland, right?
Yes.
Yes.
No, you don't have much to do on this, because they're handling a whole bunch of variances and stuff.
So, why are we here?
You went there to pay our cause.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Neil Alexander. I'm a partner with the law firm of Cuddy &amp; Fader. Here tonight on behalf of Fisk Management. Also with me at my farthest right is Kelly Dantas from Fisk Management. Richard Hind just moved to her right, who's our architect, and to her left is Dan Collins from Hudson Engineering. So, we last met with you on April 18th. We took all of your comments into serious consideration and have revised the plan accordingly. We met with the ZBA on April 26th, showing them an interim revised plan that's very consistent with this, and they were essentially ready to approve that night. We held off on the approval and asked for a continuance so we could meet with staff, which we did, and planning staff twice on May 2nd and May 9th, to go over all our calculations and numbers and make sure that our variance requests were full and complete. What we've done is honor the requests in particular by Commissioner McCree and Commissioner Albin as far as we've maximized the adaptive reuse of the existing structures, which we'll get into. We've also, at the same time, increased the green space area. It decreased the lot coverage and the building coverage. So, by way of example, the building coverage is going to be 50.1%, which is on our zoning table, whereas the existing is 54.3, and also was that amount in 2014 when our project was approved. The green area, even though it's not a requirement for multifamily in the R6 zone, but we calculated it because of the conversations previously, is actually going to increase from the existing 14.6% to 16.9%. And essentially, and then I'll hand it over to Dan to explain a little bit more, what we've done is, the connector building, we've narrowed it massively. And what that's done is allowed us to open up additional landscaping in this area. We also took the commissioner's request to see if we could put more green right up against the front building and put a fence along the southerly property line. We also, and Richard will talk to this right after, Dan are using as much as we possibly can, after having done investigation of the existing building and what's available. And we heard you on that issue and took it to heart. So, I guess at this point, Dan, if you would just sort of run through the site plan, and then Richard on the architecturals.
Just quickly, on your green area, did you count the roof or not?
No, we did not. It was just whatever green area that we calculated was just lawn and landscaping. The roof area didn't count as green area.
Still doing the green roof?
Yes. So, basically what Neil had said, Dan Collins, Hudson Engineering, we had narrowed the center area, which actually was, actually makes the center of the site look not nice. We were able to put a lot of more landscaping in between here. In doing that, Richard also relocated the walkway, which curves to the side and makes it a little more aesthetically pleasing. We had the two-foot strip that we had previously shown in between to show separation between this property and the property to the south. So, we've shifted that down. We're able to show some more green area and landscaping adjacent to the single-family residence. We've also shifted this parking down as part of all that, which added some green area. added some green area up on this side as well.
Why doesn't that green area continue all along the whole property line?
This is actually a lease area. There's an auto body shop or auto shop next door. So they lease that area from the property for, what was it? It was the...
It's 10 years. It's until, I can't look it up. I think it's 2012, 2021, I think.
Yeah. So that's, we can't really touch right now. But so we were able to add the...
Let me just ask a question. Would that be something you would do in the future once the lease expires?
I mean, if, if, yeah, absolutely. We could turn that into lawn and landscaping. I mean, it'd be nice to put some trees there anyway to, to block it off.
We're trying to negotiate with...
You have to speak, you have to...
We tried to talk with the tenant.
Could you just identify yourself?
Sorry. Kelly Dantes from Fisk Management. I'm sorry. We tried to negotiate with the tenant. When we bought the property, our deposit contract is so we can't go back, and he's not willing to give up. So unfortunately, we need to keep it until...
No, I understand, but if, if, once the lease expires, would you be then willing to?
Yes, for sure. Yes, yes. For us, we have interest because it's, would it be better for us for the tenants that will be renting the building so can have a better view from the window, other than just the body shop? Yes.
Okay.
Because I see, I feel like that's going to be incorporated as a condition, just so you know.
I think it will.
The, the, the lease expires on December 31st, 2021. I guess just to continue, that pretty, actually, honestly, that really wraps it up. We're not changing the buildings. Rich will get into that modification shortly. So all the remaining setbacks and variances would remain the same. As Neil already said, we are increasing green area, which in turn means we're decreasing lot coverage. And since we're narrowing the middle, we're decreasing building coverage as well. So I guess I'll pass it to Rich.
Richard Hind, architects. We did take the commission's observations on the conservation and adaptive reuse of the existing structure very, very seriously. It certainly improved the design, and we thank the commission for their guidance on that. What I found particularly interesting was that the, when we got into the structure, we actually were able to maximize the utilization of not only the, the floor plate and the perimeter walls, but we actually preserved the structure and the first and second floor plates of the previous garage structure. And we found a really quite interesting way to adapt that. There's a column line and basically a very tall structural steel beam spanning three, three different column bays. So we've been able to kind of accommodate a higher ceiling on the first floor apartments, which really is quite wonderful. And we actually preserved the entire second floor plate. And moreover, we were able to preserve, if I'll go to one more drawing. We've highlighted on this drawing, which is a cross-section, the existing structural beam, the existing second floor plate, obviously the first floor plate remains. So all of this structure remains intact. We've actually been able to also maintain this portion of the existing front and rear facade, which is then replaced with the new facade. Beyond this line is the new structure that we've spoken about and the new roof scape. This element is the portion that's removed, which we think probably is something that is an aesthetic improvement. So we did very much benefit.
It's not clear from your drawings, but apparently then you're saying that the mansard roof on this is basically post.
This mansard roof? This is all new. Everything outside this line is new. This is all remaining facade on the front and rear wall plane, and this is the proposed additional roof scape.
The roof doesn't, so that's a depressed area in the middle of...
Oh, yes, that's correct. I'm sorry, Commissioner. This is a mansard with a hollow in the middle, and that's...
So in there would be your mechanically...
That is correct. That's featured here.
Yeah, that's not, wasn't clear at all from the drawings.
Yes, that's correct. That's a supplemental drawing, and you're right, sir.
Okay. Okay. Is it a similar detail on the house in the front?
Actually, more, your drawing.
Well, in fact, we've, we've, we've matched the floor plates. The existing floor plate on the front building is lower than the existing floor plate on the rear building.
You're going to raise it.
So we've actually removed, we've saved the perimeter walls. We're going to carve out the existing floor plate, elevate it, and then extend the second floor to the eve, and then the new roof.
So, but the new roof again will have a depressed area in...
That is correct. Yes.
And the mechanically connected...
That is correct. Yes.
...going to go in there. Okay. I had one question, and I don't know the answer to it, but I have it as a question. The, the, the mansard roof kicks out at the, at the eve.
Yes.
And gets very, very close to a property line.
Yes.
I don't know whether you need a variance for that. I think you might. And I just bring it to your attention, since I know you've got to go back to ZBA. And...
We should check, we'll check projections.
Please.
If he tells you you do, odds are.
I would say it's 90%.
Yes.
Not fighting it.
Yeah. He's not usually wrong about these things. Every now and then he sneaks one in, but...
And also check with the building code and the fire marshal, because you don't want to make it into non-combustible construction. It's going to be pretty expensive.
Yes. We, we have prepared a, the buildings will be fully sprinkled, and Kelly will speak to the fire consultant that she has retained.
No, go ahead.
We have been, we hired a fire engineer, and by the code, they decided that if we have the full sprinkler system in the building that cover the two buildings, including the connectors, this would be enough for the, for the fire protection.
Just, when you're so close to a property line, make sure you review it with the local fire marshal and the local building department. They, they get really, particularly when you're close to the fire.
Yeah, they are working on it. And just one comment about the projection. The barn that we have right now also have a projection already. So, but however, the projection is around this line here.
Right.
And now we are raising, but it's there. Yeah. We already have this projection in the building.
I'm commenting on that. I just have given you advice that before...
Might be helpful.
You have to have a variance, and you may as well run it by the fire marshal and the building inspector, so you're covered.
Okay. Thank you so much for the comment.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
So just on some other outstanding, so you're going to go back, you're, you're going to go to ZBA and get the variances. You're applying for a DPW, Department of Public Works exemption. They've given you some comments. There are two comments from them. You're aware of them?
Yes.
The one is that it's a different form, and the other one is that there's something with the drain connection. You're going to see HDC, the Historic District, in June?
Yes, our, our goal to be on June 14th.
14th and June? Okay. You are getting the variances. And then the last thing is, if, if you're, you're going to go to the ARC for landscape and lighting, maybe you could...
I wasn't, I'm not fighting. I wasn't on the impression that we needed ARC.
Well, it's...
I thought for lighting.
Multifamily.
Yes, it's five family.
Multifamily.
Whatever lighting, the landscaping is proposing.
We had not been previously advised of that. We'd been given different advice previously, but we will gladly go to ARC.
Patrick, if we were advising...
Well, was there an approved lighting plan with the prior decision?
Even if there was, it's going to be...
But it's changing no matter what. That is my next question.
It's going to be changed no matter what.
So typically, lighting would be the only thing, because...
We don't have, we don't have a problem with it.
Because your exterior and your landscaping is handled...
For HDC.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. I think that's...
It's just lighting.
It's just lighting. Okay, so you're going to...
There is some landscaping on the property.
There is landscaping.
Right, that HDC does landscaping.
No, they do not.
No, they do not. Landscaping and lighting is ARC.
Right.
HDC is, yeah.
We've, we have been trying to get the HDC to stick, if with the HO zone, to stick with everything on the outside.
Well, the HO zone's a little different.
We're not in an HO.
No.
We're in the fourth ward.
Oh, we've, that's right. We, we were now back to...
Yeah, I know, I know. I'm sorry. I'm not...
I forget, is this 2013 or what year?
But just so you know, I wrote this down on Monday, not tonight, and it's what you said on Monday.
I trust, I trust yesterday you, yes.
Monday, you said they had to go for both.
I think it was, what was it? That's like that? Okay.
Well, yes, in this, in the briefing session, we said they had to go for both, and I wrote it down.
Okay.
They shouldn't know which one, when they're going to ARC, it should just be for the landscaping and lighting.
We will, we will confirm that.
Historic District for that.
Okay.
Historic District, ZBA, are the variances you already have?
Variances, yeah, as far as where we're bouncing to, we believe we're going on May 24th.
And you're going to look at the roof overhang in the interim, and you're good. And sewer, I talked to you about sewer? No, I skipped that.
No, you mentioned it.
Okay, so this is the flow numbers.
And you said stormwater, too.
I said stormwater, I said the drain connection, and then I said the flow numbers. Make sure that you connect with the sewer department with the flow numbers. It's the only thing on their comments that they want you to do before we...
Yep.
Okay. Because they have, I think, an overflow. They're concerned about overflow in this area.
Could you explain just a little bit the clear story that you've got there? Or whatever you call it, the coupa? I think you've...
That's being...
I don't recall that.
This element here?
Yeah.
It's just purely a little flourish. And it's really because when you stand in the front, what's sort of interesting about Church Street is that the developments that have occurred in depth as opposed to parallel.
I don't recall, I don't recall on your earlier drawings, a little strip of, of windows at the top.
Oh, no, that's actually just a, a freeze board. That's a freeze board. It's a cornice with corbels.
Oh, good.
So there's, it's hard to see. I can bring it up to you, sir?
No.
No, good.
That's what it is. I thought it was...
It's just, it's a freeze board with corbels.
Be better for us from...
There's no glazing up there.
Okay.
Get that out of here today.
Yeah, and it's still today. Hurry up. Oh, one last, last thing, one last thing I have for you, is we need an extension from you.
Yes, you do. No problem. We will sign an extension of the public hearing. What I, when I'm listening, when, for ARC, because I'm wondering whether we should come back?
You've got to ask, you've got to work it out.
May 30th or should we come back? June 13th?
The meeting, actually, I made 30th, this is the first, but the ARC meets the 7th, but I, I don't want to negotiate in front of everybody, but you know, I don't know how full vetted your plans are for lighting. Is it, do you have a lumen plan? Do you have...
Maybe let them do the...
Okay, that, that, that's why it may be premature, because I believe the deadline for the ARC is either this Monday or...
Depending on your timing, if you negotiate with them, one thing is that if, that they might let you come back here and do your lighting and landscaping review with ARC later, but staff will help you work that out.
I was just trying to figure out how long to give you an extension. That's why I asked the question. I can do that offline.
Well, shoot. You could give us the maximum.
Just give us the max, and then it's easy.
We like that. We will try to decide it, but we're so much happier when we're not under the gun.
I, I just want a stopgap to know I'm coming back for a further conversation.
I think anything, anything on scheduling.
We'd like to see you one more time after you have us.
Well, we have to, yeah.
So we, okay.
We really don't want to see you interim because...
So you don't want to see us after we're done with ZBA and HDC?
No.
And ARC. ARC.
Well, we may not be able to, ARC may be a problem.
They can get ARC done in time. Maybe they could come back if, once they just have ZBA and HDC.
I just want to confirm, HDC and ZBA.
No? No? Okay, the guys are shaking their heads. Ignore that. You get all of the, all your ducks.
So when I was coming back, June 27th is really what you want, and the, and the intervening time.
You'll have to work out the schedule with staff, but you should get the, get the ARC, get ZBA, get HDC, and then come back.
Well, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. The, the only issue is that there's only one meeting between now and the 27th, so, of, of June for the ARC, and they, they've already missed the deadline for that.
But the extension is July.
They've, they're good to go till July 27th.
Yeah, I, I think we, we're starting to worry about weather and asphalt plants and framing up buildings and getting them closed.
Good thing about it, your first floor is already done.
Sorry. It's when you got these architects, they're always so helpful.
That was good. You got me.
Yeah, I'm surprised you didn't know you didn't have to go to...
This is absolutely the first time we've been told. But it happens. There's a lot of, look, this is a, for what it is, there's a lot, there's four agencies, so we know.
You're making me nuts.
Okay, you set?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Oh, excuse me. Was there any public comment on this?
No, it's from the next one.
We only have one lane left.
Yeah.
Hey, you guys, I only have one motion so far. And it's Wendy.
And...
Okay.
This one's supposed to be quick, right?
No.
Yeah, they haven't submitted stuff.
This is item, this is item number 14?
We've seen this one before.
The Petersons? Equities? Mr. Tessie?
Yes, sir.
Let's go.
Ready to go. Feels like a new day, you know?
It is.
Indeed. And maybe everybody will be rosier now.
I was rosy at the end of the night. We're, John Tessie for the applicant. I'm here this evening with our landscape architect, Robert Brenn, Eric Sambel, the project, one of the, I guess the project architect, and...
Mr. Richard Granoff.
And Mr. Liebman from SE Minor, the surveyors and engineers on the project. You heard this application last month. There were a number of items, including proceeding to the ARC, that were to be addressed before we got back to you. And here we are, essentially to give you an update, as we need to go back to ARC and discuss that a bit, and also to point out what has been addressed by the engineers and the architects. There was the issue of the stair towers and their setback. I believe plans have been submitted. Have you seen them, Mr. Maitland?
I have, and the only thing missing from them, roof plan, is the setback to the elevator bulkhead, which I think works if I scale the drawings, but just as you put a dimension on the drawings for the stairs.
Yes.
A comparable dimension to the elevators, front, back.
We don't have it. We'll get on it.
Get it on there. Right. All right, thank you.
I think it works. I just, I can say, scaling it, it works, but let's just have the dimension shown.
Right.
And since we are talking about the roof, I noticed in the planting schedule, you have a roof, you have a green roof?
We have a green roof.
You'll have to come, if you're going to...
Here, Robert.
Mr. Chair, is your, is your mic on?
Yes, it is, but I'm too far away from it. I'm relaxing. I don't have my elbows on the, there is here.
Robert Brenn, the landscape architect with Granoff Architects. We do have a green roof. It's the area that's over the parking garage between building A and B.
Oh, so it's not the roof itself, the main roof of, of the two buildings?
No. We have, we have some of the same.
It, it looked like, when I looked at the roof plan, that there was something up there for the green roof. Is that...
Correct. We are planning the same six to 12 inches of, that we're using as green roof up on that roof.
It's just, again, it's not clear. I, I sort of deduced it when I saw the planting list that that's what you were doing. So could you at least clarify that on that?
Yes.
Are you...
Eric Sambel, Granoff Architects.
Are you using the green roof in your drainage calculations, or is it just for conservation?
We're not using it in the drainage calculation. We are using... There was a conversation, I thought, that it's being used to filter, but it's not really part of the drainage calc. Is that correct?
So we're not getting any drainage benefit?
Hi, Larry Liebman from SE Minor. There is no drainage benefit from the green roof area. There is a slight, there's a slight bump for the, for the three-foot of friable fill over the center portion. Anything else on the roofs are not counted. Scott has reviewed and approved all of the drainage issues that he has requested, and we resubmit it. Thank you.
Mr. Sambel, do you have a roof plan? Can we, can you show us where this green roof is?
Well, now, the green roof on the top of the roofs...
Talking to Larry about the green roof on top of the, on top of the residential buildings.
Fortunately, we're not in color here, but, sorry.
The, the area where we're having the vegetation at grade comes around through, like this, and then we intend to have just planters on the roof as, as well.
So when you come back, you can...
Yeah, it's both sides.
It's mirrored on both sides.
So when you come back, you can update your plans accordingly?
Yeah.
And, and the other thing, the other thing is, is it doesn't take drainage credit because of, there's only 12 inches of earth and not the three feet of fill.
Oh, I know.
Okay.
I know.
Got it.
It's, it's an inside joke.
Ask this, but will that be with the A R C, or will that be something that, other than the updated drawings for that particular question?
The green roof?
Yeah.
No, I'm just saying is, you gotta come back, 'cause you don't have A R C, and per, right?
Yes, they do have to come back, because we don't have, we didn't get an enthusiastic report from them.
Yeah, that's, we have to discuss that a little bit.
Anyway, the, the fact of the matter is that I, I think the, whatever it is, it just should be shown. Like I say, I had to find it by combing through the planting list, so it's...
Yes.
Make my life easier.
You have the landscape plan?
I do.
Right, because that was mentioned, I think in the staff report, that...
That's how...
Perhaps, perhaps you didn't have it. I think we're good with D P W in all regards.
Yes.
Right, and the sewer department, I don't think there's much left.
Um, yeah, I wasn't clear, they say that design is not sufficiently developed, and this should be resolved prior to our approval, but I think you've got some time right now to figure out what Mr. Feminella meant by that and...
Ms. Alvin, I, looking through our, our green folders of comments, I found a comment in the last meeting, that Mr. Feminella said that this can be pushed to permit.
Great, okay.
So, I just wanna...
Thank you, for the mention, exit. I think it's just a matter of what, what is usually looking for.
About how many trees saved and natural landscape?
No, I didn't have a question, that came up in the briefing, that somebody said they weren't saving any trees, and I said, based on the landscaping plan, they are, they seem to be around the perimeter, and the major one was in the northeast corner.
Okay.
Southeast corner, excuse me, it's a 60-inch oak, and they show it, do you see the big circle?
Okay, then the other comment that you raised, somebody raised at the briefing was construction parking?
I don't know. So those are the trees that they're saying, okay, there you go.
That's the tree removal plan?
It, it represents the trees that are being saved, yes.
All right.
But the red axes are the trees being removed?
Yes. Uh, Robert Brenn, landscape architect.
I'm sorry, you said the red x's, or the red dot, I'm sorry, did I see?
The, the red dots, these are the trees being preserved.
Okay.
These are trees that are being preserved, but don't belong to us. These are trees that are being removed, the x's.
Thank you. Mr. Liebman, on the construction phasing plan, there didn't seem like there was any parking for workers at the site. Has that been addressed?
The, um, we were, we were gonna develop a phasing plan for where the, for when we were building, where the parking will go, that hasn't, that, that will be submitted prior to the next meeting.
With the redesign, with that extension of the roof, has the coverage been recalculated?
I believe it has, yes.
Okay, and we're still meeting it?
Yes, sir.
Do you have anything more, or I have no other questions?
Well, it has to do really with the A R C comments, taking them collectively. Eric, you were at the meeting, right? And there was, well, I guess, universal dislike of this, this, of the building, I believe, called it Boca Ratonish, or something like that.
Yep.
Yep, okay. So, in those terms, Eric and his team have, have worked on the, the elevation of the building, to soften them up, to, I guess, bring them farther north of Boca Raton. And this is where the team currently is at, there, there's basically no change to the, to the building in terms of its bulk, they're working on the aesthetics of it, and this is what has evolved to, at this point, we are on the A R C agenda for...
Did you raise the white one again?
Raise the white one?
His white flag?
Okay, so it's essentially the same design, but a different color, I'm no architect, but...
Well, they've changed, they've made some modifications up at the level, I can see, they've cut it down so it doesn't rise above, they've gone to levelers, trip up there.
We removed the x's from the side here to begin to, one of the, one of the comments, one of my takes was, there was a feeling of verticality in this, in the contrast, and the, and the lighter sandstone elements were sort of the cause of that.
Yeah.
So we, we also were asked to look a little bit more at the context of the residential street going down Soundview, as, you know, the comment was made, that we were primarily focused on Field Point Road and the, the larger buildings up there. We, we, as, as you remember, when we had sort of the H-shaped plan, you know, we were trying to reduce the, the scales and the, you know, sort of the plan perspective. So here, we've, we've, we've made this feel more in scale with some of the houses from a plan perspective, it is a three-story building, there are, some of those residences are two and a half, three stories, because they are also on sloping sites, but the change of the terracotta on the, as the siding material here, from the sandstone here, is kind of hinting towards the vernacular of a clavert structure.
From the tone of the memo, it looked like they wanted less glass, more in keeping with the residential care, and less modern. Was kind of the...
Well, I think, no, I understand we're into this issue of literally aesthetics, but before we get to that, because we can hopefully find a compromise in those regards, although the concept of, you know, introducing this much glass i- is something our client, you know, believes is important in, in, in terms of overall, call it a statement he'd like to see the building make, but it's always a balance. Our, our, our greater concern with A R C actually related to some members' expression of feeling that we should scrap what we're doing and start over again, and materially reduce the bulk, and that, that's where we have the problem.
Was it some members, or most of them? With the information we got, it seemed that most of them said the same thing, scrap it and start all over.
Yeah, that's why we're here, because that is not acceptable. I think they, they started citing the zoning reg, the zoning regulations, special permit standards, and, and kind of decided they're gonna be their own adjunct zoning commission.
Good, takes the load off of us.
Takes it off you.
We could go to bed earlier.
So I guess, you, you, you don't need to have a job anymore.
Awesome, because...
In our view is, obviously, that a lot of time and effort was, was spent with this, I think we are talking about, you know, a, a location which, on three sides, that is, the town hall side, across the street on Soundview, where you do have condominiums, more, and new, larger buildings going up, and across the street where we have Brookside Apartments and condominiums, that essentially in keeping with the character of, of the area.
But is it the character of the area going down to Redwood Avenue, going down Soundview?
Going down Soundview, you have Soundview Terrace behind us.
Aren't they all of residential scale, two stories, maybe detached?
Yeah, but, but there were multifamily, there was at least, there were multifamily buildings already on this property.
Right.
Number one, number two, and Soundview Terrace, you know, we've run into this all the time in, in Greenwich, when it comes to the R6 type of areas, and you're gonna see, as you've seen, even on the two-family houses, that there is a, there is a change. Buildings don't last forever.
But on the site now, are...
The buildings may be relatively small scale, but you can't, you know, it's kind of like, you can't stop, you know, some people call it progress, you can't stop development. These, these properties are all gonna be developed over time, but I think it's a, I think it's a balance.
It's a balance.
It would be helpful, when you come back, to show a view across the street on both sides.
Well, I think, yes, I think you need to put the building in context, 'cause right now, across the street on Soundview, is going up a three-story building, I mean, designed by them.
Directly across the street is already...
Well, directly across the street, those two-story apartments, but I'm saying right next to them.
Right.
As you go down the hill, yeah.
Right.
Which is three-story, but it's more traditional-looking.
I'm not disagreeing with you, across the street on Field Point are more...
Modern.
Modern, commercial style of buildings.
And the way our discussion went yesterday was, if there was a way to marry it all, so, you know, you can, if you take a look at everything that's around and pick up some, an element that kind of integrates it, I don't know if that's... Somebody said that yesterday, and I'm repeating it, because I think it's a hard thing to do.
That, that we're trying to do, is pick up some of the fieldstone wall.
Sorry, you need to have a mic.
That I didn't mention before, are trying to pick up the, the base as a fieldstone wall, which is fairly predominant, especially with the Beacon Hill One and the Beacon Hill Two.
So you're saying, you picked up on the fieldstone?
We're, we're trying to ground it a little bit more, so it has that feeling of a base or a foundation, or the walls that, that are happening, and again, hinting at the, the clavert, and creating more of a, a puncture, a feel for a puncture window here. One of the comments, which I, I would disagree with, was that there were ribbon windows, you know, in, in this design, I, I didn't feel that. In terms of the, the windows, there was a, the conversation was a little bit all over the place, you know, the, the windows were, well, what about the shades and privacy? You know, was, was what was presented and mentioned to us.
Well, you know, people don't want privacy, that's their decision.
So where we are is this, is that we, you are, I mean, you, you really, you know, have to set the tone for, if the tone's the right word, for the A R C. If you want to turn around, which perhaps is, well, well, it is your prerogative, you've gotta make certain decisions under special permit, and, and certainly, the overall context of a building in a given area is one of them. But, you know, our, our view is, we're willing to work along the lines that Ms. Alvin had, had suggested, and, and was suggested, and, you know, I think, I'll call them constructive tones by all of you. But, at least from our, our point of view, we wanna work what we have, as Eric was suggesting, but if you're turning around, saying, no, A R C, we want you to dictate, and, and, you know, we'll go along with your idea that this should be scrapped, well, we have to air that out now. I mean, there's gotta be some direction the A R C is giving, this, this happened down on...
Well, let's put it this way, I think what you, what you showed is that your second cut at this is personally, to me, better than your first cut. I don't know if that's shared by the commission, but that's my feeling.
Well, no, we appreciate it.
So now the question is, what more can you do, and I think, picking up what you've heard from others on the commission, put it in context of the neighborhood, right now it's, it's sitting alone.
We're, yeah, we're happy to do that, but just overall, conceptually, you, you get the bulk, I just wanna know, there's some consensus here that we can, we, it's still a work in progress, and you're not expecting us to scrap this and start again?
I'm a little hesitant to criticize the bulk, because you're within the regulations. I mean, I, I, I mean, you're close, you're right on the razor's edge, but you're not getting any variances.
No, we're not getting any variances, and we are in a...
It's very hard for us to come and say, to address it in terms of its size, unless somebody else, I mean...
I don't know what the basis would be, I mean, we can't...
I don't know what the basis would be.
I don't think it's size, I think it's a function of the site.
The site, and, and its visibility, and that's a different thing, but I...
Site as a, as a piece of property, similar to, to Pickwick, being a, a central focus
Central.
Most of what happens through town. People come up the hill into town that way, people leave out of that, you know, that, that point, and it's that, that location, that's a specific transition from a different type of architecture into the more contemporary or larger buildings.
Except directly across the street, though, are a four-story and a five-story building.
That's why I say, put it, if you put it in context...
And that's where I'm, I think it's very important, I've been looking at it on Google Earth, so I can put it in context myself.
Appreciate that.
But I think, right now, this rendering, it looks like there's nothing else around it, and it's in the middle of the field, I mean, you don't even...
Yeah, it don't look like that in real life.
You don't show the context of how it relates to the other buildings, and I think a perspective showing the five-story building across the street would be more beneficial.
Vision to street elevation.
No, we'll, we'll work on that, A R C, but we, I think the whole point...
The other comment is, if you look at the, the buildings that are this size across the street, they have a bigger buffer from the street to the building in terms of footage and landscaping, so I think you need to...
I can appreciate the landscaping context, I don't know, I mean, some are relatively close, actually.
It isn't, but I'm just saying perception.
Yeah, perception, and I think, no, these are all constructive points that we can take forward, we just, that way, I think, this all helps us moving forward with A R C, and staff can perhaps convey that it's still a direction here, but along the lines of what we're, well, you put it in your own words, but, you know, there's gotta be something to break the ice with A R C, but we're gonna go back to A R C and, and stay, stay basically on program of what we're hearing from you.
Uh, I guess what you heard from us is, you're within the regulations, so we don't say anything based on that, but you are hearing, show that it integrates with the neighborhood, and what did you, Nick, what was your...
It's a, it's a transitional piece of property, you really need to take a look at that, and I think actually, the A R C giving you such strong comment, almost unified comment on this, when you go, when you go back, talk to them, listen to them, see what they're saying.
But we're willing to listen to their constructive points.
But understand, also understand, they are our experts, and...
Not that Nick's biased.
We send, we send this stuff to them for their opinion. Rarely do we get an opinion come back like this, where they're, you know, so passionate about something. I, and to me, it would seem, okay, yes, you've made some design changes, get that back to A R C, because they're gonna wanna see it, they're really tuned into this, they wanna know what's going on, they wanna see what the changes are.
Which is perfectly fine, I wasn't...
If they say, if they say, again, you should go back to zero, then you've gotta discuss it with them, because to me, they're the guys who, they're the guys who're gonna have to sign off on it, because it's a major building and a major piece of property.
Okay, let's be clear, they're advisory to you, we ran into this, we ran into the same issue down at, and it was a good point brought up by, by all of you, we ran into the same issue down in, at, on Steamboat Road in the Monroe Parking Lot with A R C, and the commission did, was comfortable with, just generally the bulk, but said, work it out with A R C. It was worked out at the level of working on the building, softening them, but Rudy did a good job, as, as no Eric did a good, can do a good job of showing context, that's exactly what we showed there, and it all, and it worked out, but the A R C had to hear that they have to work within a certain framework, and that's what, what I'm saying.
If they're saying make it less bulky, I think Margarita had it, I mean, that is the bulk you're permitted to have on the site, so I think that...
No, we appreciate that, and we'll...
Now, if, what they're saying is, back to Nick's point about the presence on the site and how it works, and, but, and show the integration, we keep repeating ourselves, I think you've got...
No, no, we, we're gonna show it in context, it's an interesting site over there, because I travel it every day, and...
Yes, we all do.
We all do.
Everybody's on it.
An interesting thing is, it's very difficult to look around, because of all the traffic that's going on.
I know, it's very hard.
So you have to spend, your eyes are usually on the road because of the, who, who's really gonna go through that light, are they really gonna stop?
I'm up from Redwood Avenue and get stuck at the traffic light, at the stop sign. I'm up Redwood Avenue, get stuck at the... I'm up railroad avenue, get stuck at that stop sign.
Yes, and then you're looking around.
You never do that again.
Yes, you're coming around the other way.
It's not, you're right. You don't look around too much. But that said, we appreciate the fact of the importance of the corner.
Don't come up that way.
Okay, well, we're done, and there may be someone speaking, so...
Well, if you're done with your presentation...
One last thing, Mr. Tessie, we would be deeply appreciative of an extension.
Listen to this. I did it already.
Also, Mr. Tessie, the count of the numbered bedrooms in the existing buildings?
Seventeen. I hear a few cards.
And is there, is there a makeup of that as well? I'm not to be nitpicky, but do we, are those two bedrooms, all of them, three bedrooms? How is that?
You mean to break up all the units?
Yeah, do you have that information?
Oh, yeah, you didn't give it to us.
Oh, we have all the bedroom, we have the field cards for the staff. I haven't thoroughly...
No, no, and then on the proposed?
Okay.
It's 12, units 17 bedrooms.
Yeah, but if they don't have it, it means...
Okay, if we could get that broken down, either, if you have now, I'll take what we have now, but in the future...
Yeah, it's...
This isn't good enough. We realize that we didn't submit any sort of staff reports. Mr. Bristol got this, I didn't analyze it.
Okay, would you like to get an analysis with that, or just give us the tax card?
I get cranky, I'm like, I look at one, I'm going to go back to getting a copy.
Are there any comment from the public?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Attorney John Harness representing some of the neighbors on Soundview Terrace. I want to start out by saying it's 12:29. It's late, so I don't intend to keep you late, but I specifically want to reserve time to address whatever the plans finally turn out to be on this application because we know there's a lot of items that are still open. So we're not ready to give our final comments as to all of that. But as to this issue about bulk and compliance with zoning regulations, because it's been discussed tonight, I feel compelled to bring up some of my issues in that regard so that they could be looked at before return. And when we were at the A R C meeting, I pointed out that I thought that there was not compliance with the minimum side yard setback from Soundview because this resulting parcel will become a corner lot. And under the corner lot regulations, an enhanced side yard requirement applies in any residential zone. So because this is a residentially zoned property, corner lot, it, the regulation says that you take one-half of the sum of the minimum side yard setback and the front yard setback of the lot it abuts. This corner lot abuts four lots. And so if you do the math and you add up the five minimum feet required for each lot, that's 20. The front yards of 25, that's 100. Total of 120, you take half that, that's 60. So they would need 60 as a required side yard for the portion of the property that faces Soundview. And I don't believe that they have that. And I mentioned that at the A R C meeting, and I don't see that anything's been done to address that.
Not an appropriate subject to deal with A R C. It's an appropriate subject to bring to us. I'm not sure, I, well, have the applicant check the side yard setbacks.
With zoning enforcement.
Yeah, I mean, staff can work it with zoning. Z E O reviewed it and did not catch that.
No, but I'm not sure, I'm not sure that I necessarily agree with the analysis.
Yeah, but let me say it differently. Z E O did not make that comment, and zoning enforcement has reviewed it and did not comment.
Usually, they would comment on that.
It's the kind of thing that they would catch, but...
Mr. Harness, it may be helpful to just cite the section and exactly, either mark up a copy or just explain it in words, and we can give you an answer.
Right, 6-132B, I believe is the section. And you just do the computations on the four lots that it abuts, and that's what it comes up to. And I thank you, Mr. Chairman, for pointing that out. I did mention it A R C because I didn't want them to say that I never told them so that they would be, you know, preempted from looking at this issue. I wanted to give them fair notice.
They can't, they can't do much with it. We can, but they can't.
I understand. Then the other issue I wanted to address was the issue of parking. And the issue of parking, as I understand the regulation, is that these units are three-bedroom units, and that there would be a required 1.6 parking space requirement outdoor and one parking space indoor. And that's the basic requirement that the, all applicants should stick with unless they get some kind of change from this board as to a different mix as to how those parking spaces will be allocated between inside and outside. So far, I haven't heard any reason why they would want to convince you that they should have more indoor parking spaces versus outdoor. And I'm troubled by the fact that the regulations don't contain any guidelines for how the board would perform this analysis about going from the required 1.6 spaces outdoor, which in this scenario is 19 spots, and they don't have the 19 outside. What guidelines are in the regulations that would drive the commission decision to change that? And here's what I would propose. I would propose that before you make a decision about how you allocate the spots inside or outside, that you ask the applicant to prepare a drawing showing what happens to the plan when you show 19 spaces outside. And my suspicion is, is that the building gets smaller. And so, you know, our reaction over here is that this is a large building that they're putting on this, on this property. And Mr. Mackey was correct when he pointed out to Attorney Tessie that it wasn't just some of the A R C members that said they have a big problem with it. Their minutes start out with the committee, unified and with conviction. So it was all of them. So, you know, if you don't have the minutes from the A R C meeting, I'm happy to provide those. But it was clear from me, when I attended the meeting, that they basically said, you better start from scratch. So, you know, those are the comments I wanted to just flush out now because you guys are dealing with this bulk issue, and I think those things are important to look at in that regard.
To answer your question on parking, there, under section 6155...
Section 1, 2?
I'll go beyond that. It says, where a combination of garage and outdoor spaces is required, the commission may authorize a different mix of indoor and outdoor parking.
Right, and that's the section I'm troubled by because it doesn't give the commission any guidelines in order to make that determination. So I am coming up with a suggested guideline, which is make them show a plan showing the 19 spots outdoor, which is what is required. And let's see what it looks like. Let's see how it changes the orientation of the buildings, the size of the buildings.
Except that we, as a, I'll speak for myself, I prefer more parking under the, in the garage than on the surface.
I'm sure everybody would.
Everybody wants it indoors. I mean, and that's...
Well, apparently, you're not going to get much of a...
I understand I might not get, at this level, the kind of response that I'm looking for, but I feel it's fair to bring it out.
Okay.
That we should discuss in the regulations the type of parking. I think the other issue is, it's very site-dependent. There are sites where indoor parking is just not environmentally responsible. And for us to say we would prefer it when it requires a lot of blasting, we would not. So that's why it's open-ended.
Right, and that's another good issue. The more indoor parking spots you have, in the circumstances of this case with a lot of ledge, yields to much more rock removal, whether it's by virtue of blasting or chemical removal or chipping, and a lot more noise and dust. And so why wouldn't you consider those types of adverse impacts to the neighbors when making your decision, instead of just saying, we'd rather just see more inside rather than outside? And so those are some of our comments. Again, we want to reserve time to, once we see where this finally lands, so that we can then fully address it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Then we'll leave this open.
I just, very quickly, because I, on the issue of the parking, I don't need to really respond to what the commissioner said. The mission said is certainly consistent with what the commission has approved many times when it comes to these multi-family projects, whether it's two or three, or three units. On the issue of the side yard, you don't, that's a new one on me, that you take, you take four neighbors and you add up their yards. So we all know that's silly. The bottom line is, it's 25 feet all around. You take the 25 feet plus 25 feet, divide it by two, you get 25. It's kind of magical. So I'm sure the Z E O and staff will certainly confirm that.
I think that's probably why it's not in the drawing, and...
Yes, sir.
I did the quick calculation.
It is what it is, right. Thank you. Have a good morning.
Well, with that, would, did you give the, he already did the, on the extension, okay, so... We're leaving it open. There'll be another meeting, as you know, so...
We're done, right?
We are done, unless you want to do minutes or something?
No, we're just going to do 27.
No, Mr. Chair, we don't have copies of the minutes from the May 2 meeting.
I didn't sign them yet.
Yeah.
Bummer.
We're done with the recorder.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, and here.
Good night.